Thank you. No comment.
That's right.
Good to go.
All right. All right, welcome to the Bowingham zoning board of appeals meeting for October sixth. The first item on the agenda is continuation for eighty six Pine Grove Ave. Amy understand there's an update?
Yes, um, the applicant's representative, Mr. Kenny has submitted an email dated October sixth. And it was submitted at four fifteen, um, asking for the board to request a withdrawal without prejudice.
Okay.
You know, Grant.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
You could certainly read that into the record.
Do you know why?
Yeah, I can read the letter. Okay, Amy.
Four fifteen, so.
I am aware that Peter Betha Bethoney called you earlier today to withdraw the petition for special permit. That is before the zoning board of appeals and that was scheduled for a continued hearing this evening. I would respectfully request that the zoning board of appeals allow the withdrawal of the matter without prejudice as certain issues have arisen on Peter's end. That must be dealt with. Please excuse the late notices, these issues have only recently arisen. Also, if there is a particular form that the ZBA would like be submitted or to withdraw without prejudice, please advise. I looked at the ZB website and didn't see such a form, but I am aware that sometimes do use a form for withdrawal without prejudice. Thank you very much for your assistance in this matter, Stephen Kenny.
So if the board could make a motion to.
I will so move to a withdrawal without prejudice. I grant you a withdrawal without prejudice. A second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? Okay.
Very good.
Passes.
I don't know, Brian, if you wanted this to be probably quicker.
Is anybody?
For the family apartments.
Explanation for that? If I can give a little explanation on? So the applicant always has the ability to withdraw without prejudice. Uh, without having, uh, without having to go through the whole process. So this just nullifies the whole application. And if he were to start over, if he wanted to do it again, he would have to start all over again with all of the notices, et cetera. So, uh, at this point in time, he's withdrawn without prejudice. And it's in the, uh, it's the end of the, uh, meeting for that particular applicant.
All right, so I guess we're done.
Sorry, yeah, thanks.
I thought, I thought it was the want and an explanation for you guys.
Well, thank you.
Well, you said, yeah, he can read.
Just got it at four fifteen, so I apologize.
This guy is a, he's a late.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, I'm not sure if you want to take this on a board, this would be probably a rather quick, um, item or.
Which?
It's for Lakeview and states.
Oh, Lakeview, yep. So I'll just, um, I'll recuse myself, get him, then just let Peter.
Oh, Gabriel, that's right.
Amy, what do, what do we have to like you?
Angela, would you like to give us an update?
I'm here, hi guys, haven't seen you in a while, um, so the update is the traffic mitigation is. Uh, the, the last remaining item in the mitigation agreement is that the traffic mitigation work on, um. I always want to say South Center, but it's South Main Street, I believe, at, at Center Street. And, um, you know, we started the process to get this traffic light installed and redo the intersection quite a while ago. I mean, I would say, uh, we started last year or even the year before, kind of planning and. Um, all of our material is ordered, everything that we need, we have, it's just the, um, moving of the utility poles. So the new poles are installed, National Grid, I believe, has moved their wires, but now we're waiting on Verizon and. I think there's another utility company, I'm sorry, um, that needs to move their wires from the old pole to the new one. We don't expect the utility companies to, to get it done in. This construction season, we'll probably have to complete this work in the spring, but like I said, we are prepared to do it. We've bonded the work, um, the, our last occupancy permit, our one hundredth occupancy permit is. Contingent on that mitigation work being done, so we've bonded it at the recommendation of Don Di Martino and Tim Icardi. And, um, it's fully bonded even down to the, uh, the traffic light that's going to be installed, which is sitting in our warehouse, so. Um, we're hoping that the board will approve tonight, uh, our ability to get our one hundredth, I think it would actually be our ninety ninth and one hundredth of the only occupancy permits outstanding. Um, with that work being bonded.
Okay, and I'd say that's the five hundred?
That's a five hundred thousand, yes.
So you're looking for the release of that last occupancy?
Yes, with, with that, that work being bonded, which I've, I've already sent the original bond certificate to the treasurer's office, it's going to be bonded anyway, but we're hoping that. The board will, um, see that we've come a long way on this project, we're almost done and, um, you know, we've been sticking to our commitments and we are, of course, going to complete this mitigation work as soon as we possibly can.
Okay, and this is phase two you were talking about, right?
Yeah, well, so, yes, it's, it's our, our last occupancy permit in, in, in phase two, but the work is offsite. The work is on South Main Street at Center Street.
No, I was, I wanted to show you phase two. I guess I'll put forward any questions?
Yeah, after we get our one hundredth occupancy permit, you're done with me, so.
So all of the, uh, one question was, yeah, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, with the, with these occupancy permits, does that cover all of the, uh, what will you use as well?
Yep, that, that, so the last two occupancy permits are affordable units. The units are done, we just, we don't have buyers for them yet, so.
Okay. Thank you.
They're subject to whatever the, the, I'd say, but Jim, do you have anything to add or?
No, I agree with, uh, much of what Angela mentioned, Don and Tim have been, uh, reviewing the, the project to make sure that. The security meets, um, every, all the lasting infrastructure that's necessary. Conservation also does have a bond, uh, for a few items as well. Um, but yes, this is one of the, the final steps, uh, to get in this project complete. Uh, tonight, just so everyone's aware, tonight is just, uh, if there, if there's any concerns to be raised, but I believe, uh, Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this was, this item was continued to November. For, for review and extension of the permit. Uh, so this is just an update of the security for, so no vote is necessary tonight.
Very good.
Okay, so we are not, not wanting to release the lawsuit.
I think.
So you're coming back next month then, as well as that, what I understand?
Hopefully we'll have a meeting right now, we have nothing on the agenda, but we can certainly just put this on the agenda. Not a big deal.
Yeah, I think it's supposed to come back in, in November for, um, uh, another extension of, of the permit, yeah.
And, and hopefully maybe it'll be wrapping up of the permit and it'll be, uh, a final extension of, uh, to no longer have to come back and continue the matter.
Yep, yeah, and we're also, we are preparing, I mean, not to get into like a full update, because I know I'm going to see you guys again next month, but. We're putting all the bounds in, um, the property bounds in phase one and, and we have. Uh, punch lists that we're working on and cleaning basins and catch basins and everything, preparing for street acceptance in phase one. I don't think we're quite there yet for phase two, we still have to get traffic lights in and sidewalks and, and things like that, but. For, uh, Candlelight Lane and Northern Lights Way, we are gearing up towards, uh, street, asking the town to accept the streets, so. We're, we're getting there.
I have one other question, did, did, uh, you come up with some solution for the, for the screening of the light for that individual that had the light streaming in his house?
Uh, you know, I'm sorry, I don't have an update on that, I know that our purchasing department was looking at it, I can follow up with them and report back to you next month.
Thank you. Okay, so I gotta be honest, I'm a bit confused. Jimmy said we have no vote tonight, are we not voting on release that last occupancy permit or waiting for next month for that?
No, so, uh, the last occupancy permit is contingent on infrastructure and they're bonding the infrastructure per the permit, so. There's no vote necessary, this is to bring the board up the, up to speed with where they are with the security and if there was any concerns with that. As you are the permit granting authority, but there's, there's no vote necessary this evening.
But one last question, I guess, so I'm assuming there's no issue with water anymore?
So for, um, I, I was speaking with Anne Matthews this evening and as of right now, there is no, uh, concern, especially with the basin that was. Or, and I know there is at least one, uh, individual in the audience that could speak to, uh, the current activity, but no, no complaints regarding the basin down near Silver Lake. And there was, there is some, um, um, last minute touch-ups of the basin B, which is behind the through road, behind all the houses. On phase two, but that was, uh, according to Ms. Anne Matthews was in reference to, uh, the hall road, which they're stabilizing now, um, and that's bonded through conservation.
But the other, the other basin, the original basin is working, uh, appropriately?
Based on DPW's comments, yes, uh, but I don't, I don't know if Mr. Wright has any updates from on the ground.
Mr. Wright, do you have any?
No, yeah, it seems like it's doing fine. The only question I would have is how often is the maintenance, just as far as like, it's getting pretty weedy on that part of land?
Okay, I can have Wellington go take a look at it.
Okay, yeah, just curious, because it does seem like, because we, which isn't bad, we kind of actually have like some trees, some nice birches kind of growing over by us, which is fine, but. Um, yeah, no water issues.
Excellent. That was the big issue.
Yeah, and I haven't heard anything from any of the neighbors, so we ask good.
We had some pretty substantial rain over the past few days, so it's a pretty good test, I guess. So I guess, um, this is just information, we're going to go then. We'll see who has issue.
Thank you, Angela.
Thank you. See you next month.
All right, thanks.
Bye bye.
And with that said, a boom.
All right. Nice, Peter. Which, uh, Amy, do you think, should we just go to forty eight Plymouth or should we go to the other? Okay. All right, so I'll just motion to open the hearing for forty eight Plymouth Road. All those in favor?
All right.
Do we want to read the public hearing or do you want to wave?
I'll make a motion with public hearing, go green.
Those in favor? Okay. Hi, good evening.
You're, you're good.
I'm done.
No.
It's just opening, yeah.
You're all set, they'll run you right through it.
Can you, yeah, just let us know your name and just a little bit about, um, what you're saying.
Phil Landino.
Okay.
In that house, he died almost since nineteen sixty-four.
Okay.
So basically a family house.
So it says there's a sale date, so was the house sold to you from your parents, the ninety-seven?
Yeah, well, my mother died, yeah.
Okay, but just curious, but that was the one, yeah.
When they had gotten sick. And all four of the kids were out of the house and I had come back. And then they, uh. When, when they passed on, then it's when we started just. Being a family house, anyone, any family can, you know, I had three sisters and they have kids and. You know, it's.
When was the addition made then? That's over.
The addition was done in ninety-eight.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, now, yeah, just tell us a little bit about.
It was a, oh, it's a two-power, it was a two-power addition, was living space above it. The problem that you're saying about the illegal apartment is my nephew and his girlfriend. Lost their place that they were staying up in New Hampshire, they needed a place to stay for a while until they could find another place. He asked if he could stay in the garage. So I let him stay in the garage, I guess he made it look too much like an apartment or anything. But they have since moved out and is back to being a garage. But the other problem is that they were talking about, I have a friend, um, this medical proxy. And he's living at my house. And they say because he's not family, that is an illegal apartment, because he's living, he lives down on my, my basement that was also had, uh. I guess you could say that it's, it's an apartment. I mean, but it's always been a family apartment.
So how many people are in the main house, then there's you?
Well, I have, I live in, I'm living in the living space above the addition, above my two-power garage. I have a, my disabled niece Katie living in one room. I have my nephew living in a bedroom.
And what's his name?
My, my nephew?
Yeah.
My nephew was Christopher Pomete. His father is also Christopher Pomete, he's the one that we're doing the in-law apartments for, because, uh, he just had part of his foot amputated from dealing with diabetes. He had lived in this house for, for twenty something years, he only moved out when my sister passed away. And then he came back within a year and a half. And now where his, his foot's getting worse and everything, just kind of need. That he needs to be downstairs, he can't come upstairs or anything like that. And I also, like I said, my other friend that I'm his medical proxy, he's already five years past his life expectancy, but.
I want to commend him too, first off, because this, this was a zoning violation, I should have clarified that at the beginning. Um, and so the zoning compliance office, um, basically took this in as, you know, we had to address the complaint that came in. And so that's why he's here, so I commend you for taking the steps to making it legal based on the process.
So how many total people then are at the house?
There's only, uh, myself, I have my niece Katie, my nephew, my niece Katie is from my sister's daughter. My niece, my nephew Christopher was my sister Pam's son, but.
And then there's the other, his father, Christopher.
And then my friend Kevin, and then myself.
And what's Kevin's last name, I guess?
Kevin is Noel, N O L E T. And he's the one.
And what's Katie's last name, is it?
Katie Richardson.
Well, right ahead, because I'm, I'm trying to, uh.
So four total people?
Oh, you're doing the next, I'm like.
That's not.
So it's almost like four total families.
Oh, no, no, wait, there's five, because there's you. Yes, there's five, yeah.
And how many kitchens and bathrooms are now?
There's six bedrooms, two kitchens.
It's two kitchens.
Well, yeah, downstairs, we put an electric stove downstairs.
Okay.
And that made it another, that made it the apartment, it means the electric stove.
And besides the main kitchen, it's only a stove in the house?
Yeah, well, the main stove was gas, I can't.
Do numbers, that's all. So just to clarify, the, uh, the apartment is downstairs from the house, not over the garage, correct?
No, no, the garage is my garage, that's where, there was a complaint on here about unregistered cars too, but I have no unregistered cars in my, on my apartment. So I had two cars that I garage and I have companies on them. And when they moved in, I put my cars off the driveway, but they're registered and insured.
So you guys got the. There's nothing over the garage.
It's lived, it's, it was zoned, it's for living space, living, yeah, living space above it. It's just an open, a big open room.
Oh, okay.
But it's attached to the main by a wall. Yeah, there's a doorway attaching to, to the other part of the house. So it looks like one, just seventy feet for one.
So it's the basement, that, it's like a finished basement, that's the family apartment, or which is the?
That would be, it's finished, yeah.
It's like a walkout basement?
Yeah, in the main house.
Yeah, that was.
Years for like when my sisters started having kids and someone always lived down there, I didn't realize.
Because I thought like you were, like, I thought it was the part over the garage.
I think the part over the garage, you would just call a bonus room, maybe?
That was, you could, you could call that, I mean, what it was zoned for was two-type garage and living space above it.
Okay.
That's what it was on this.
So Amy, can you tell me about the complaints and the zoning enforcement?
The, um, I don't know how in-depth you want to get, we received, you know, a letter in regards to the issues. And so what we do at that point is go out and take a look. And, um, at that point, there was, I think it was your brother had one of the, a car out in front.
But that was also, yeah, he was, he lives up, four houses up the street from me. We had his car on, in my driveway with a, a sale sign on it. And someone said that, that was illegal for me, that I couldn't have someone's car parked in my driveway.
So what happens is we receive, you know, a complaint, and so at that point, we go out and take a look, and so. At that point, um, Tim and I both agreed that he needed to apply for a family apartment.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you, so the, the complaint you received wasn't to do with having. People in a family apartment arrangement without.
They wouldn't have known that, no, I can, I can show you what the.
So the, the complaint was about the unregistered cars?
It's, it was several different items which were addressing, some of them are not zoning, um, and I. I feel that's, um, he's addressed the other ones, just the zoning thing is really what we need to focus on, not some of the other items listed in that.
So was it more the amount of cars, though, that they were?
It's right now.
Complaint?
It's, it's not a legal family apartment, that's the only thing we're acting on right now.
But, but in terms of the, the, what was the complaint?
It's right there, you can read, it's, it's, um, there's several different issues in there, and I think, you know, for his, just out of respect for. For him, I think some of them just don't apply to what the zoning board needs to address, there are issues that are outside of our jurisdiction. And he's addressed them, and there's a few more that he needs to address, but there again, they're not under the purview of zoning board appeals.
Well, I get that, but I just want to know the, the nature of the complaints, like, I'm not going to judge.
But it looks like there is reference to a fair amount of people.
Yes.
Living in a.
Yes, and again.
So that would be.
Our goal is to make sure that when residents, if we go there, they work with us.
My nephew Jimmy and his girlfriend, the one that were living in my garage. Moved out as Chris and Chris were coming in, so it looked like there was people moving in and moving out. But it's still, like I said, there's. A year and a half ago, they were living in that house, you know, they've been there for twenty something years with us.
And one of the vans that was up on the yard, which people were complaining about, you know, one of his niece or whoever, I think, I believe it was Katie. She needed the vehicle to be parked a certain way because of her disability and, you know, I think when you look at the neighborhood around, their concerns with what was going on. Seem to be valid, but, you know, again, with the complaint and the things that were brought up, I really think we need to stay focused on what he's applying for, and it's, it's the family apartment.
How many complaints were there, though, just the one? Um, is that correct, or?
We, I've had three people in the office.
Okay, so three separate?
About us, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Three people.
Yes.
So one of the complaints was just there were many people living in the. Right?
Yeah, there's been many people, it's always just been four or five, I mean, you go back. Ten years ago, you got like nine of us in the house.
So let me ask you this. So your, your niece and nephew live with you, right?
My niece, I have, yeah, my niece from my sister, and then my brother-in-law and nephew, that's his son.
Those are the people that have always sort of lived?
They've lived there, well, no, Katie didn't, she just moved in. Uh, she just, where she just, she's having heart issues and she's severe disabilities. And her mother, like I said, lives a couple of houses up the street from me, but she didn't have any room in her house. So probably eight, so I actually gave her my bedroom, and that's why I'm sleeping in the, uh, I'm sleeping in the extra room.
So is she the, the person that you're applying the permit?
No, I'm applying the permit for Chris and Chris, so they can go downstairs, because he had just lost part of his foot, amputated from diabetes and everything.
So Chris, Chris is your nephew and your brother?
Yeah, brother-in-law.
But then you have someone else that's not him?
Yeah, no, I have my friend, my friend Kevin's been living at that house for probably about twelve, thirteen years now. And, uh, it's just. He's, he's got a lot of health issues and everything, and he's already, like I said. When, when he first moved in, he didn't ask me if he could, uh, move in to live there, he asked me if he could die. But he only had five years to left to live when they, when they told. And now it's like, he's five years past that, it's like we're kind of, kind of a joke going between us, all the trouble he's caused and everything, but he's still living.
So your, your application is for your niece?
No, it's going to be for my nephew.
Oh, your nephew and your brother?
Yeah, like I said, they had lived, they've been living there for twenty seven years, and they just moved out when my sister died. And now they came back, and now I'm just letting them have this bottom half, so you just move in the bottom half of the house.
And that's where the second kitchen is?
Yeah, and that's actually, that was our old playroom and everything, the original house. And then we just start.
So you're not, you're not proposing to do like any construction or changes, you're just looking.
No, everything the way.
Have this infrastructure there, and this is just the.
It, it, it's always been bedrooms down there, where we have all the kids and everything at the house. You know, anything that's changed, this is not, my friend Kevin is not family. That's the only thing that changed, he's the one that was living down there, because at that time, his medical problems were more severe than Chris's. So now they're going to flip-flop or whatever, it's going to be done, we just take care of it and get it done.
How many cars are usually in the driveway?
I have two cars myself, but they're both going to be in the garage shortly. And then Chris has a, a van. Katie has a, a van or actually not, those types of vans, and Kevin has his truck, so that's it.
Would you want to, I mean, does the, I guess we could have during discussion, but maybe we stipulate at least how many vehicles?
I have two driveways, so. I have one driveway on the Rappel Hill roadside of the house and one on the Plymouth roadside of the house.
Okay.
So there's, it's, it's not crowded or anything, it doesn't look nasty or anything, it's just two cars parked on one side driveway. Uh, right now, there's street park on the other, but those two of those are going in the drive. So. Should be the only problem with cars. So right now, we'll listen to six, one, two, that, two, three bedrooms, two mics. That, Matt, you just did the math, three bedrooms, add up.
Well, no, you were saying that there are six bedrooms, right?
Well, yeah, the, the original upstairs, there's three bedrooms and a bath, and then downstairs, there's three bedrooms and a bath.
But it's listed as, that's what you're saying for the real estate?
I'm actually going a little further than that.
I guess that'd be a good question for Tim.
Is this on Timesure or something? Timesure.
That's a good question, too, yeah.
So you're saying there's six bed?
Is that something that Amy, do you know? Do you know Tim has gone to look to make sure that those all fulfill?
I don't know if Tim's on.
I was going to say, just that there, there are certain, the six bedrooms, it's time at least make sure they kind of.
I don't.
Fit requirements as far as two means of progress.
So I mean, two could be, I mean, they can be considered bedrooms, but they're stored rooms, basically.
I guess I'd just be more concerned from still, like, safety kind of the thing, that's more where I'm thinking.
Well, when I had the addition done, I had a hot wire of the whole house, so it was like thirteen, uh. Alarms, fire alarms, safety throughout the house, be concerned about that. But every single room in that house has a fire detector in there. I was put through that one, I had my addition put on. It wasn't going to do one with the rest of the house, the way it was, because it was almost sixty years I've been living there, huh?
Because I, I mean, the other thing is just the two means of egress, like, if it has like a certain, like a window to get out as well as like a.
Oh, absolutely.
Path to travel through the bedrooms, so.
There's, there's, there's nothing, nothing wrong with it. Are you saying about walking in one door and coming out another door and?
Yeah, no, I mean, I, that would be my only thing, I guess, I just wonder what, for Tim at the building inspector, seeing that, if there are.
Boy, if it's a family apartment, the basement, they have to have egress windows.
Yes, yeah.
Do we know if that's been done?
I don't know, is, Tim, are, we can check in the, um. Tim is, um. Jim, do you see if Tim is in the?
No, Tim's not on at the moment.
It's just for safety, that in case that there's a fire, that, I guess worst case would be.
It's size.
So, yeah.
Windows.
If, I mean, I think if they, if each of the bedrooms at least has like a window, then they're probably okay.
One of the bedrooms has two windows, none of, they all have, they all have windows. Everything is, is, yeah.
Well, split entry is going to have, the upstairs and the downstairs are going to use the same entry anyway.
Yeah.
You have a legal bedroom. Have to have the rest. So I was wondering if the building inspector's looking at that.
That's all, yeah. I'm sure it's just a simple question for follow-up with Tim. So I guess. Any other questions, do you want to go?
I have one question.
Oh, yeah, got it.
Okay, sorry, how many actual bedrooms are in the family apartment that you're applying for the permit for that?
It's, it's like I said, right now, my bro, my friend Kevin is living down there, he's in one bedroom, the others were stored.
Okay.
But there are two other rooms that could be bedrooms.
Okay.
I'm just saying that they're three bedrooms, but they're not bedrooms right now.
I get you.
So your, your friends will be downstairs. My friend Kevin is living down there now, because Chris just moved back. Like I said, so now we're going to switch them around, because Chris is having a problem with the foot, so Chris and Chris are going downstairs. And Kevin will take one of the moved upstairs.
So it'll be a nephew that'll be living down.
My nephew and his father.
Okay. Chris, what's his last name?
Chris.
The two.
Chris is Christopher Pomete.
And just procedurally, that we would just have to, it would have to be just for their use.
Right.
Whatever's, yeah.
Right. No, that, that was explained.
Okay.
And then your your friend is gonna be, is he gonna be staying downstairs as well with Chris?
I don't, no, I was, I don't know what he's, what he's doing, he's still, he's gotta go into the hospital again in a couple of weeks, I'm not sure what he's doing right now.
But the main thing is that Chris Simon, it will be, your nephew will be.
It's my nephew, but it's more for his father, my brother-in-law, he's the one that's going through all that.
They're both Chris.
Christopher W is 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 uh the father, Christopher Philip, Christopher P is his nephew.
And I believe, you know, you you might be right, Peter, and that's. That's why he's here is to do it the right way. And that's the discretion of the board and that's. He's here because he got the letter because it wasn't done the right way and that's for the board to determine. And that's why he is here.
I know, that's the, I guess, under the criteria, the, which is gray, I guess it says. C one, two forty dash seven four for the criteria for family apartments. Cause it does have under C one. Whether lot area or other site characteristics assure mitigation of any impacts of the neighborhood. Which is kind of saying the lot area or site characteristics, but. I guess that would be my only concern is, I I guess that's where my mind kind of goes to at least. Stipulating how many cars might be out on the driveway, and again, I don't know how enforceable that is, but maybe if that is something that. Cause it's not something that bothers me, I'm just thinking about for the neighbors.
I have two driveways, there's only gonna be three cars, two in one and one in the other.
I'm sorry, was there a question?
About how many vehicles? If they are registered, that one's allowed to have on a site like this.
There's no limits of the number of vehicles one can have if they're all registered uh vehicles, if they're properly. Uh, stored on on site, I mean, uh, there's no, we don't, we don't have a regulation in Bellingham on. Parking on paved surface or anything like that. Uh, so the 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 whole, the key is registered versus unregistered, everybody's allowed to have one unregistered vehicle and no more.
Cause I guess, and I'm just speaking for myself, is that it seems like you're. Obviously helping out family members and a friend, but I'm just also thinking about how there's a way we can. Work with that, but also try to mitigate if there's anything that might be. You know, disturbing neighbors. But that's just.
I don't know any of the neighbors that complain, I mean.
Mister, Mister Chairman, there is a couple of people online, I don't know if they're here for public comment, I don't know if you're uh would like to hear from them.
Sure, does that sound good? Yeah, I'll motion to open. I don't, okay, alright, if there's anyone out in the public that wants to speak on this, just uh say your name and address.
Doesn't look like anyone online here is unmuting.
Can I say in here? I've been a neighbor of his for twenty-two years.
Okay, just give your name and address. Okay.
Right across the street from him. Never had a problem, no Chris and Chris. Twenty-two years, not a problem there, I don't see what. Who's, who's doing all this? Cause of this commotion.
That's what we're getting at, it's like someone new in the neighborhood, stuff and stuff with everybody or.
Remember, we have to stay focused on if it's not a legal apartment, we have to make it legal and he's taking the steps, which is a really good thing. And we have to make sure that everybody within the town is following the same rules. And I think when we get something into our office. We have to, we have to address it. And we have to find the resolution, and so tonight is the resolution, so we can't really focus in on who made the complaint. Or who's made the complaint, it's how to find the resolution, right?
No one, we've we've had, I've had no trouble with anybody in all the time, I've looked at it, so this is just new.
Were there complaints from neighbors?
The guy, two people that came in, two neighbors came in, yes. I did.
Cause I guess.
And they were happy to know that it's not expanding, that was their concern. That it's not not expanding, and they were aware that there were sick family members. And the fact that it wasn't gonna be expanded, they were okay as long as. The, they were concerned about that van being parked up on the top of the yard. But again, that's nothing that we can regulate, if somebody wants to. Park their vehicle on the top of the hill of their yard, that's nothing that we can regulate, so. When the person came in, you know, I explained that, that we can't regulate where people may wanna park on their own property.
And I was only parking up there, cause that was the easiest access in the house. Without him having to walk up. Being inclined to get to the front door, I just parked in the back. And I just kept this truck up there, but I haven't parked this since, so I. You do realize that if granted strictly for your family members listed, correct? Absolute, oh, yeah, 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 about the in-law about strictly, yes, no, I understand that.
Motion to close the hearing. Well, I I guess that um. I'm sorry. That's okay. So I I guess we, it's just that we, we don't mean to give you a hard time. We gotta, we gotta go down the list and make sure we check all the boxes and give everyone a fair shake and think about the neighbors and all that, so that, I mean. So we're not, you know, we we, family-in-law apartments are not usually very controversial.
Like I, like I was saying though, like, everyone, all the. Granted, new people that have moved in, I don't really know. But everyone around, that I know, you know, so. They had just come to me because we would have had all this, just a conversation amongst people and everything would have been settled. Instead of this, but. This is now naming this illegal way, so for future generations.
And we appreciate you doing it, there's probably many people that don't actually do the formal way to make sure the town. So we do appreciate that. So if we go down this list, whether the lot area characteristics, I don't think that applies. So we're asking basically to permit something that has been in existence, seems like for a number of years. Um, so I think a lot of. A lot of the criteria is checked, because you're not changing anything, you're just wanna maintain. What you're doing, basically.
The issue, the issue was, was like I said, was the other group, was that my nephew living in my garage. That was where I think the other people were complaining about the illegal apartment, not the existing house.
And that's what I think is giving everybody pause, is that there's not a clear identification of. People and there's already been existing problems, or at least enough problems to trigger complaints. And um.
That I didn't know of though.
Yeah, so I think that's where everybody's sort of stumbling a bit, is because it's a little unusual and we already have complaints. So we wanna make sure that we make sure that your family can care for the each other. But also make sure that the, if there are ongoing concerns, that we're conditioning it properly. To make sure we don't say, you know what I mean, so that's, that's our struggle. It's nothing to do with you.
I mean, technically, you can have as many freebies want to live in your home. It's technically, it's when you create that second apartment.
Right, which is already there, so the the downstairs has a kitchen?
Yes.
And has a separate, like a, would you consider it a? You can, you could never go in the top floor and you you could live separately?
If you, if you wanted to, could you do that?
Yeah. There's a bathroom, a bedroom, kitchen. Like a full kitchen stove, sink, refrigerator. And that's been there for. Alright, and it's always been family?
Like I said, it was my sister Phyllis and her family, and then uh. When she moved out, my nephew Jimmy and his girlfriend and kids moved in there. And then they moved out, and that's when Kevin, Kevin just found out and so that's when Kevin moved in. And that's probably about eight years ago or something like that.
And then Chris and Chris, Chris, one of the.
They were living upstairs. And the existing house is three bedrooms, my sister Pam, like I said, and uh her husband and my nephew. So, and I know the three bedrooms, it was the three bedrooms upstairs. But like I said, downstairs, all the rooms, when we first moved there. Uh, there were four kids. And there are only three bedrooms upstairs, so they immediately, my, for my office, they put a bedroom downstairs. And then they just moved into more kids going into their bedrooms downstairs. It turned into a major new apartment, so we can. Didn't have to come upstairs to cook and anything, it was, didn't take much, I just stuck an electric stove in there. Wasn't trying to do anything. I um, I would like in this, actually, we are, you and your family's safety. Make sure we have Tim address the um egress windows in the basement. Bedrooms. Uh, I think that's very important.
No, that's, that's fine, there.
Difference of a regular window and egress is, they're designed for body, you know, firefighting, yeah. There's some basement windows.
Or if the height's too high off the floor, that's my concern, yeah.
They're full-size windows down there, but just.
Okay.
Does it wanna grant something that someone get hurt? No, that's all.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yes, that'd be a big one of mine.
And then, of course, yeah, moving, if it's granted, then it would just have to be Chris and Chris that are in the family.
Okay, now can I close? Motion to close.
All those in favor?
So can I ask a question?
Okay.
Jim, do you have any suggestions or anything? Terms of conditions or anything else like that?
No, I think with the family apartment, I mean, it sounds like we narrowed it down to the individuals that are gonna be there and for the reason it's gonna be there. Uh, as you guys mentioned, there's a lot of pre-existing aspects to it, um. You know, I think in terms of maybe the parking, uh perhaps, that sounds like it's, it's something that was. Is something that is of concern maybe to the residents and with this being a family apartment. One of the triggers is to make sure that they can easily fit. Uh, the the appropriate amount of parking for duplex, so maybe if there is. An opportunity for those residing in the, in the family apartment to um properly. Uh, you know, park in on the paved surface perhaps uh as a condition, but other than that, I think it's on town sewer. And it's um, and we could certainly have the building commissioner confirm safe uh egress.
If we prove this, we wanna put in the approval that um if change of family members. In other words, of course, of course, no longer was out there, change family members has to be re-pressed.
I think it's our, it's built in. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's built into the bylaw itself.
That's correct, yeah, it's for a specific person, so if they change the individual, they would need to come back uh to the board.
I have two big driveways too, I can like put probably. Well, at least four cars on one and maybe ten in my other driveway.
You shovel those?
Why do you think those two kitchens? I've been shoveling since I was a kid and I started now.
So. I liked what, what Jim suggested, so if anyone else has anything to say, I would move to. Approve subject to the uh conditions expressed by Jim.
So you're making the motion?
Yeah, unless you think it's premature.
No, I don't, I don't think so.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, that passes. Alright, thanks, yeah.
Of both of those residents. So when we put in the decision just tonight.
Just put it as Chris.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Chris W and Chris P. So what's gonna happen is Jim will draft a decision. And then I file it with the town clerk, there's a twenty-day appeal period, and then at that point, um. It gets registered and you'll be on a rotating basis for five-year re-up for renewal. Um, so we put you in the system for that, so that you know now going forward, that this is in place. We're gonna, we're gonna talk about that tonight. Yes, yes. I appreciate you working with us, I really do, I thank you a lot.
Then we're, you know, we totally um, you know, appreciate that you're trying to help out friends and family, so it's not that, we wanna help you.
I didn't know if it was friendly, I knew who he was, but no.
And we have a renewal, that's um. This was an application, it's basically, you know, a renewal of um sixty-one Linwood Ave. This one wasn't put in through the regular process, it should have been done, I think, probably a year ago, so they just realized that it had expired. And so, nothing has changed, person is still living there, and so it's a renewal.
Okay, are they present or? If there aren't any changes.
There was no changes, correct? And there's no violations, taxes have been paid. So everything's up to date.
Yeah, the only thing I would say is we typically do have, I have people come in, right, and say.
We need to discuss that tonight because what's. I don't know if we wanna do that for every single renewal, um, but this was one that. Wasn't renewed within the timeframe, because on our end. Just to be honest, we do, we need to do a better job of making people aware if it's expired. And we. We need to do a better job of that, and so I have a plan that I wanted to kind of lay out to you guys, and that's on the agenda.
The only reason I like to have people here is because. Assess their credibility, you could sort of, they have to come out and do something and say, yes, it's. Like relative. Anybody, I know you've already vetted it, so that's fine, but I think going forward, my preference would be for.
I think that's gonna be really hard, Brian, to be honest. Because if you have, let's just say twenty of them, that we have to do in a year, to have all of them come in. It's, it's gonna be very time-consuming and and, you know, many of the other towns that. I've seen have them do that in the past, they don't have people come in, they they take them as a whole. And renew them, and if there's a question, if there's violations, if they haven't paid taxes, then they bring them in. But if you wanna bring the people that are living there in, then, you know, realistically, we probably should have had that same standard with this applicant. So I think, you know, that's maybe dialogue we could have on how the board wants to proceed, if you wanna do that, we certainly can, but. I think that's just something you guys need to think about how you wanna manage this, um because. There's some loopholes that haven't been working very well to. Make people accountable for things that they have received permits from that need to be renewed, so I think we need to discuss that. So if you wanna hold on.
On this one, Chris, and then we can.
If you want them to come in, however you wanna handle it.
This is my personal preference to have people come in. But whatever, I'm only one, one voice. There's a motion on the table to uh grant this, the extension on this one, then we want to. I'll second it and see if we can at least close this one.
Discussion? Alright, all those in favor? All those opposed, okay. Now we can talk.
Um, one of my projects that I really want your input on is I'm looking at past. Special family apartments, and some of these go back to, I don't know, Jim, what would you say, maybe the early nineties? And so there hasn't been a set process in place for renewal, so how, how we were kind of doing them in the past is we bring one in a month. And then another and another, and so it's been a little bit hard to keep track of and keep everybody on. A rolling basis of renewals, and so my thought wasn't, again, give me any input because I just want to get a handle of it. My thought moving forward was if I take all the ones from two thousand and eighteen. And go all the way back as far as I can, which may even be early, early nineties. Research, have they had violations, who's still living there, and I would put this in a letter to those residents. I bring that all to you, probably either December or your first meeting in January. You'd have a full list of the addresses. Person that's residing there and it would have a checklist, taxes have been paid. Whatever you want on that matrix that I could, you know, basically have for you, then at that point, you guys would approve. If you wanted to hold some and have me do some more research, then at that point, what we would do is renew that grouping for the next five years. And then I'd put that information into our unpermanente system, which would. Basically remind me in four and a half years, these are the groupings that need a letter to go out. And then we'd send it out because what's happening now is it's very hard to manage these on an individual basis when you have so many. So that was the plan I wanted to propose to you, and I I wanted to basically have it. Be ready to go in January, if I can get all of my ducks in a row to make it happen. Yes.
How many of these permits are in style?
Right now, from my list of from eighteen to two thousand and twelve, I have thirty. It's not outrageous. But what's happening now is with the zoning compliance end of things, as we saw tonight. If we have a complaint where people may not have it as a legal one, then at that point, we're. We're having to have them do it legally, so I think we're gonna see more and more of that. So I kind of just want some guidance, if you want me to do them, you know, monthly, I think we can do that. I mean, if you want people to come in, Brian, we can do that also. However, you want to handle it, but right now, it's it's not managed in a way that I think. Works in our best interest, because this is one example, this woman didn't know that hers even expired.
I agree with all of what you're saying, but I also understand what Brian is saying too, that we can. Lean a little more information from them and make sure that that it is a legal family unit at this time, so.
Just out curiosity, how did we find out this was expired?
The daughter, the daughter he called. And she said, oh, my gosh, my mother thinks she had to renew it, it's we're a year late and.
Oh, so they can't, okay.
Yes, and in that, we really don't want that to be the process, we want the process to be, we have all of our letters ready to go. We have a system in place and.
First of all, it's a lot of work we are gonna take and we appreciate that for sure. Is there any way we can make like a paper if they didn't want to come in, like a maybe affidavit type of thing?
Absolutely.
At least you have something that you can. Hold back and say, if you sign this, this is what it should be.
Right.
You're not, this is a violation, so.
Right. And.
One more thing to track, unfortunately, but.
Right, and I think the thought too was we're gonna stay that it would be a hundred and fifty dollar fee or permit fee, but that would be for the five years, so it's thirty dollars. Pretty much a year to have. I don't know if it's there, I haven't seen that there was one, but. For this one, I did put in the one fifty because it is for the next five years, so.
I mean, I know a handful of quote family apartments that. Not legal, I mean, this, people moved out, oh, we bought the house and look, my in-laws go there now.
Realtors will say, oh, yeah, yeah.
Close attorneys tend to do that too.
Closing attorneys, that's right. So I think it's great that you're doing that, because there there's a lot of people that do. Either they don't know they're taking advantage, or they do know they're taking advantage, and they're also taking advantage of people that come and rent their apartments. Thinking that legal and then there could be a fire and there could be a lot of other problems. I think it's fantastic that you're doing that and we you're thinking of a way to do it. But I do think that, you know, this is a, this is an something that. Is an exception to the what people can do with their homes and it's. Something that we have to vet and make sure that it checks the boxes and I don't. You know, if they were coming in more frequently than every five years. Then perhaps there's a reason to say, fine, you guys are still there, but five years is a long time and. Particularly when people come to us, not all the time, but it's usually elderly people, sick people. And five years can be a long time in in those categories of situations, so. I do, I personally feel a little bit more comfortable having them come and and request it, because I I don't think. I mean, we we're tasked with with doing this, you know, so.
Let me, I think you're you're spot on, I mean. One of my first family apartments was a full blown house, the garage built next to. House and they're renting it out.
I don't wanna make your life anymore.
So let's say your your scenario, I send a letter out. They can't verify who's there, then at that point, I send another letter, this isn't a legal family in law apartment. You need to come and have a hearing in front of us, so I think we can hone in on those that might be doing this illegally.
Well, it it that brings up a good point, um, is there a way for us to verify? Like if. My in-laws lived at my house in a family apartment, wouldn't they receive some type of US mail? Come into the houses or with it, we should be verifying that five years later that that person still indeed lives there and gets mail there. I just I'm looking for way, because anyone can tell you anything you want to hear.
Well, that's where the the assessment of credibility comes in, because we're not gonna have a trial for these people.
No, not that, but just.
Has recommendations, Jim, what do you think, how could we verify that more than like just a slip of paper?
Well, for a bear, um, I don't, I don't know if we 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 want to be in the business of, you know, tracking down to see. And and they're in compliance, you know, what we do, we used to do is send a letter. As it's getting closer to their expiration, simply saying, hey, as a reminder. And, you know, it take the onus is on the, you know, the the applicant to submit within the the. Timeframe that's on the permit, I agree, it is a long time, though, it's essentially four and a half years, because. You're supposed to renew within six months of it expiring, but I mean, this it's that's having an apartment in in your structure there, I mean, it's a bit, it's a. It's a, it's a decent sized permit, so they, and some onus needs to be on the property owner to get to uh. To update it and and, you know, with thirty or so permits, I think. A few years ago, Laura had a log and you simply just would go down there and and reissue the letters. Now, if they expired, that could be something where we double double down and and reissue another letter. Or submit, you know, or go on to the site, perhaps, what have you, but until it expires. I, you know, I I don't think we really need to be in the business of tracking down to make sure that grandma is still in the basement there.
So if we were to think about it, Amy, you said there's been thirty in the last five years. So if we spread that out over a bunch of meetings that, you know, wouldn't really be too cumbersome as far as. But I'm saying that the five year period is only, there's only been thirty of them, so if if they were to come in. Uh periodically as their uh, as their five year term was up, we're not gonna be bombarded with.
That would be my only concern.
You know, my my concern is how many you ever find prior to twenty eighteen.
And that's that's once I start doing right.
Those are the people I absolutely want to see and hear from them and see what the conditions are of the property and all of that stuff, because that's been.
That's gonna be a whole different animal.
We did that, didn't we, Jim, at one point? There was a, there was a period where we were doing a lot of those, right?
Right, the confirming, confirming the permits, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, we we did that for quite a while, especially with these family apartments. Uh to get them, and that's why there was an influx for maybe a year or so of. Uh of continual renewals, but to Amy's point, I mean, I think it would be a positive improvement to. Kind of bring them all together at once, if it's if if it works. Uh, you know, and and they respond appropriately, that would be a good streamlining. I mean, you could certainly give it a shot for this this coming year and see, see how it works as like a pilot run.
Or what if we split the difference, like if they renewed within a lot of time, they can sign a piece of paper, or they exceeded the allotted time, then they come in.
I just, I just don't know what the virgin is of coming in, they could even do it through Zoom, what's the difference?
It it's us, the the burden's gonna be the amount of time that, I think what Amy's looking at is us voting on a package. Versus each individual, I think that's what she's.
That's like Jim saying, it's streamlined.
Streamline it too, we're gonna have a sheet of paper in front of us with, say, fifteen applicants. With all the criteria is checked off, who's issue this one?
Probably like the selectmen do it. There whenever they do their licensing, they probably don't have every person come in every single time, they have their list. If there's an issue, then they call that person in, so it's it's almost like how the selectmen do their permitting of whatever licenses they do, they have the list. They vote them, there's concerns, they have them come in. But you guys, however you want to do it, I just, right now, is the time to get a handle on it, because if we want to start this January first. I have to get, I have to get this in gear, and if we're not gonna do it January first, if you want to do it that, that's totally fine. But I just want to know how you guys want this managed.
Okay, yeah, but I I think it's great that you you're going, you know, making sure that people are compliant, I think that. That it's a great thing and. Whatever we can do to help you, but I think part of the process is having the people come in. Trying to be difficult, but it's it's our task, we're we're delegating authority and. I don't see the burden, we're, this is a. Like I said, it's an exception that the the bylaws provide for these people to do something a little bit different, and the only thing they gotta do is come in. And tell us their story.
But think about that, Brian, so if you want somebody to come in to say their ninety year old mother's living there, is that really realistic?
Why is it not realistic?
I don't, I've never seen a town have to do that with everyone, I just, I never have, and I I've worked in like five or six different towns, I've never seen them. Had to come in to verify somebody there, which I have seen people do that if there's been issues. But when you're doing just the basic renewals, unless there's an issue, I've never seen that, but if you want all those people to come in. Then we can do that, but we have to be very clear with how we want to handle this, and maybe, maybe we're not ready to do it this go around. Maybe we need more discussion about this, and maybe I can put a survey out to other towns on how they do that. But I want a system in place that works for us, that's my main thing. And maybe we do need to chew on it a little bit more.
How does it not work right now?
The letters aren't going out monthly, so if one was issued five years ago in January. There's not, there's not a letter that's going out in five years from now, there there's not a handle on it.
So I get that, but how does that, how does that equate to having them commit?
It doesn't equate, but it's when you need an administrator within a department that's gonna be responsible for doing that task. It's easier to do them in bulk, like they do the licenses through the board of selectmen, you do them once a year and that's, that's how they're done. They don't do it sporadically.
Do it every single month.
Right, it's.
But they come in all at one meeting.
Yes, so that was the thought coming in in January, you know, have all of the listing of them, but I didn't think having the people in. But if you want the people in.
So when we started this, I told you I had two questions, I asked you one, second question is, can we do it for February? Cause I'm typically away that way.
We can do it, we can even, if you want to do it July, you know, do them, do it July first, we can do it however you want to do it. But I want to be, I want to help this board figure out how to get this done and do it well.
Well, yeah, it will be because she wants to do this on an annual basis or a biannual basis instead of doing it every single month.
But it's thirty over five years, right?
Yeah, but we have many more.
So I guess devil's advocate, though, that with some of these, like you're saying, say they're not on the up and up. Wouldn't kind of them vetting it, and then if there's complaints from neighbors, wouldn't that kind of catch that?
Yes.
Which is what I would think.
That's what happens now, like.
Yeah, so this one would have caught caught in the system, because it would have been, they bring it to our attention.
I think we're we're getting off the 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 point that she's trying to get accomplished.
But her point was.
Try streamline her end of the work.
That's great.
Doing it in a group. Now, even if you were to do it, the group is streamlined the way you want to, could we, and we still want to come in or not? Could we stagger there the month they commit, can you do it in a group and say, A through D are gonna come in January? Is, I'm just trying to make.
That complicates it, to be honest.
Okay.
I don't think we need to do that. I think we can, if if you. I want to make it as easy knowing the staff that we have here to get it done. Right now in our office, I don't, we don't have any administrative help, we have no secretary, like, we don't have a secretary down there. So in order to get this done. I have to get it done in the most efficient way that I can, knowing that it's gonna get done by a certain timeline. And if I, if I don't have somebody that's gonna be able to do that on the administration side of it. Then it's not gonna get done. And so. That's what I want to make sure that if if we're committing to put these letters out, they're gonna be out. By the day we choose, and they're gonna be renewed by the date that we choose. Because I don't want it to fall through the cracks, because if it falls through the cracks, then the public is gonna be witness to, you know what? And I I don't want that to be under my watch, if I do something, I want to make sure we're doing it.
Run with the number of, as if we've issued thirty permits in a timeframe, you're right, we won't have thirty people there.
No.
We'll have five, six people that are coming through renewal. I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
So we're 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 getting accomplished what Amy really needs to get accomplished, and also the board wants to get accomplished. We can, the two birds, one stone bill.
Yeah, I don't, I don't care the timing at all, like if if you want to do it once, do you want to do it orally, you want to do it. Whatever you want to do, but I just want them to come in.
Okay, so you want all of them to come in?
Yeah.
That are renewed, okay, so that's, so if you guys want it, so let me figure out. If we only go back to from two thousand and eighteen. Let me see how many of those are, I don't think I'll be able to, well, we we'll see how many are back to the nineties, maybe, let me see, but we'll plan on doing it in January.
So I guess the question I would have is that. I guess to me, I don't see the downside of having the Amy and them kind of vet them and that just have the ones come before us that. Something's changed or there's been complaints, because then the other question would be, what about all the dog channels, is that going to be?
Here's the problem, I would imagine that when, if it was a. If we do it all at once and we don't have the people come in, these are all gonna be notices, right, that's all gonna be noticed to the public and the neighbor's gonna show.
No, no, there's no, it's not for butters, there's no public hearing notes on this, this is simply. It's it's a simple renewal, there's no public hearing, there's no butters. My thought was those that don't, I put out the initial letter, those that don't comply within the thirty days. Of either showing proof of who lives there and giving me the paperwork and the check, those that don't, I'm gonna have the group that have complied with everything, they gave me the check. They said their mother in law lives there, there's been no violations, they've paid their checks, I bring you that list, list A. You guys approve all of those, then I have a list B, which is they didn't respond, they owe taxes, there have been complaints. Then I research list B and I say to list B, you're coming in.
But the neighbors, so when when people come back. Will we grant?
You did, there's no public hearing for renewals.
Oh, wait, but will we grant one, right, it's a, it's noticed? In-law apartments aren't public?
For for this resident, it was because he, this is his first time applying for it, he should have applied for this realistically, probably twenty years ago.
Yeah.
But he never did, he got, he got in the system where somebody had to complain for him to do it legally, so he came in.
Amy, one of the things you were saying is, and when you were saying how you go about it, you say. That they would show proof, what proof would they show that they that they still have the a family member there?
Exactly what I think Jason had said, an affidavit. Exactly what I think Jason had said in affidavit, that this is who lives here, my mother, her name. And then they, you know, either we can have them get it notarized, I mean, there's there's things we can do.
That 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 that's the function of the board, that's an assessment of credibility, right, we're saying, oh, we're, we believe you. And I'm surprised that renewals don't trigger a public notice, because there would be no opportunity for. For neighbors to say, wait a minute, there's seventeen people living in that place and it's always noisy and this.
That's why I think there'd be a catch in that, that at least they would complain to the.
Well, not always.
That's, I guess that's true, if it's noticed, that's better, but.
Yeah, I don't wanna overthink it, we can think about it and come back next month.
I don't think you, why would you wanna have to do a whole new public hearing for renewal? But still, if nothing's changed, why would you have somebody have to go through that whole process of notifying the butters, putting it in the newspaper? I mean, it's a lengthy process.
For for the neighbors, I mean, they're asking for a special accommodation, you're gonna give the. Public an opportunity to air their concerns if there are any.
That was a good suggestion if you had any, ask another towns how they do it as well.
That's a good idea.
I know the town of Milis, they they simply create a list, the zoning board meets. And they vote if there's any violations, then it goes to Mike Jim Petro. Mike Jim Petro goes out and inspects and says, this is one that I don't believe, you know, should be reissued. And it's a very easy streamlined process. But again, it's it's how in depth you guys want to, and you have to own it. You know, if you're gonna have people come in, you have to be ready, if you wanna ask them all those questions, Brian, you have to be ready. To question, well, is, are you sure that's your eighty year old mother? I don't know if I wanna be in the business of doing that.
That's what we do now, I don't understand.
I don't know.
I don't, I don't understand the the additional burden of someone coming in.
To be honest with you, I think if we we ask them to sign an affidavit. If we ask them to sit here and tell you something. You don't know who's lying to you.
People lie, they don't.
But I don't wanna be in the business of choosing if somebody lies or not, I simply, I don't, I don't know if the board wants to be in that position.
But that's what you wanna do, that's what you wanna be in the position of assessing someone's credibility.
No, I simply wanna put a form out that says, this is my mother's living here, and it's if if. I don't want them to get their blood type and bring all that, I don't, right, I wanna make sure. I don't, I just wanna keep the process moving.
Never asked that, I don't understand what the. How does it cause an additional burden to have someone come in and we can say, oh, hello, okay, you're still there.
I think it, though, there's a slippery slope with that, and I'm just gonna be honest. Cause I look at the woman that came in that was thinking about having one for her mother that was disabled. That was the one a couple of months ago. And I think there crosses a line of question that, questions that we ask of people. That may be outside of our jurisdiction of being able to dig about people's. Things that really aren't for us to ask, to dig that deep into somebody's. Are we sure she's disabled, are we sure, I just, I think we need to be very careful with that, and maybe, you know, we need more discussion on this. I don't wanna be in the business of questioning people, I think, you know, the main function that I wanted to bring to everybody tonight was. Streamlining this and just making sure that we're doing it the right way. And we can still think about it another time.
So, just so I I get to, your approach right now would be, let's get to January one, everything's twenty eighteen. Do you have a a time slot that you're gonna say, okay, from twenty twenty to twenty eighteen, I'm going to this group?
That's how I was thinking of it, yes. So I was basically gonna get a letter out. November, saying you have thirty days to get us, who's living there? Yes, who's living there, verify it, we can either say, you know, how I, however we wanna word this, I can give you the template. I can run it by town council, verifying whoever's living there, then at our January meeting or whatever meeting we wanted to do February. You guys will have the list, and then you either take action or you don't, or we put those that are suspect in another pile.
And what what are you thinking for going, your ti- your timeframe, your workload for going further back, what are you thinking? It's gonna be a lot of work.
It's gonna be a lot of work, but I don't mind doing it, because I want that process in place, like I. When I start, I finish, and I will finish this, and if it's, if we choose it to be January, February, it will be done.
Cause what I'm thinking is, if you get aggressive, twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty seven, it's gonna be a very busy year.
It will be. It will be.
I'll be gone, that's okay.
So I guess is this to Art's point, is this something that we could kind of table to the next?
We can table it.
And then the other question.
Table it, then I can't do that in that timeframe. So, um, if you're not comfortable and I'm sensing you're not, and that's totally fine, we can wait another year. But then we're another year behind.
But you also said mid-year too, though, right?
We could do mid-year, we could do July, maybe we do in July first, and that gives me time.
Can we do a compromise? But you do what you're gonna do, but to Brian's point, have them come in in the January, February timeframe.
I don't, yeah, I don't know if I, if we're gonna be able to get people in in the winter too, I I just. I think we need to, I think we need to talk about this some more.
Guys, good question though, for, so for the dog kennel stuff. Aren't we opening the door of this to the dog kennel stuff if we're doing this?
For the renewals?
Which, to me, I am totally fine with the dog kennel, because it's kind of like. Unless things have changed or there are complaints, I feel like, that's what I, my concern is that we're gonna get inundated with all these. A whole run of all these renewals coming in, and then you're opening the doors to all the kennel stuff. Cause that one, we're not, we're saying that we're relying upon for the kennels, that if there aren't changes and that. They don't get complaints.
I think we should ask Jim, because Jim's been enough places, how how do they do it in in your town, Jim? Tell us, please tell us.
Every, no, every town does a little bit differently, uh, you know, Bellingham is actually unique in your, in the references to animal kennel. In terms of a special permit before the zoning board, um, and also. Uh, family apartment is a rather unique one as well, some, you know, go above. Family apartment to accessory dwelling, and that's through special permit, a lot of towns actually do administrative review of family apartments. Um, but but many also, uh, you know, there was a run. Back in the early nineties, I believe, to set up all these family apartment zoning bylaws and it kind of structured the same way. Uh, the renewals are ju- the family apartment renewals, not the, not the kennel kennel, but the family apartment renewals. They are just a meeting of the, a a regular scheduled meeting of the board, so yeah, no public hearing or anything like that. Um, you know, it could, I I think it really is just the two, um. Each board's, you know, comfort level, uh, you know, as Amy brought up, the select board does licensing. Uh, through just simple rundown of addresses, everyone says yes, and if there's a concern, you put a hold on it. Um, you know, that's something that you guys could could think about and maybe, uh, talk about at the next meeting perhaps. Um, animal kennels, that's a, that's a whole unique thing to Bellingham and. Um, I, you know, we would have to take those one by one, I think, and each one of those decisions have a lot of different conditions in it too. Uh, some may actually require hearings uh later on and and others might not. Uh, so that that's a, that's a whole another and one itself. Uh, but but yeah, so I I mean, there's no straightforward answer for the the family apartments. Um, so, yeah, that's, but you guys, I I think. You know, maybe trying, uh, Amy Amy's and seeing how it goes, and if, you know, you certainly can say, you know, I. Not comfortable with this process, we'd like to bring them in, or you're only bringing in, you know, those that you. That have complaints or, you know, something like that, you certainly can. Amend the process as it goes, as it's not, you know, it's not in regulation or anything like that, so you certainly amend it as as it goes.
Something even like how many years they've resided there, or something, I mean, that, maybe I could put something that would make. Everybody feel a little bit more comfortable, like how many years maybe that person has resided there or.
So Brian's point is, the the old saying is trust, trust, but verify.
So I I I think we can do both things, I think you can do your process and 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 that is fantastic, because I think that's this town needs that. But we also just bring them in. I don't get, I don't know what the. Why there would be a problem.
No, I I think Amy's just trying to streamline it so that it it does get done, that's all.
And do you then not, let's just say somebody doesn't have a relative come, then do you deny it, because that person's not here?
We say, you know, and and it's your elderly mother, yes, and okay. If the obvi- if the hardship is not obvious to us, we've always been very delicate about, can you tell us a little bit more about that? We've never been, so when was she diagnosed and does she lead all the time, or does it?
So then are you saying you don't want them to come in?
We want them to come in.
Just, just the applicant.
Whether it be a new one or renewal, we've only had the applicant. Sometimes they'll. There are.
Okay, so in the letter, just say you will need to come to this meeting in order for it to get renewed?
Yeah, the speaking to the applicant, yeah, because it's not, it's not, the person living in the apartment. Really has, it's say nothing to do with it, but they're not the owner of the home, it's the applicant that owns the home. That we need to be discussing with.
Okay, so then, and I can also provide them with a Zoom, with a Zoom link, be fine? All right, so we'll do that in January. I'm not happy about that, but I'll do it. I think it's, it's overkill. You know, it is what it is, do you wanna do it in February?
I'll be on a beach.
Okay, so February, we'll we'll call them all in and take it from there.
So that's just gonna be a whole, it'll be the whole slow of them coming in, okay?
We'll see.
I won't be here for.
So, uh, Brian, do you have fun with that?
They're usually very.
Usually, right. Okay, I think we just have the minutes and we're good.
One last point, if 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 it is a. A large amount, can we spread it over a few months, does it have to, do they all have to come in in February?
I think the streamliner, right?
You try to split it up. It'll be six, it'll probably be about six.
If it's six, it's fine, but it's twenty.
Yeah, that's, that's.
But it wasn't, in two thousand and eighteen, we didn't have twenty family.
I know, I know, yeah.
I was gonna group them all the way back to twenty twelve, and that right there is about.
The older people, I definitely feel much.
As she goes digging further back.
Yeah, but.
So if that's the case, then what I can do is I can schedule, I'll figure it out. Then we'll do July first, you know, we'll just do July first, because our year end is June thirtieth. If if it seems unmanageable for January, we can do it at the July meeting.
This phenomenal.
I just have to get a grip of this, and I'm passionate about getting a grip on this, and I'm right now really passionate about getting people who aren't. Doing this legally. And making sure that we get them in, but we work with them.
Are you going by address or applicant's name?
I, we have both in there.
Because I know, um. I've got a family apartment and I move out and he buys the house and, oh, so I think address may be. Cause you have a lot of people that bought homes, the realtor said, oh, it's in law, don't worry about it. Now we're gonna get a whole new group of people that, oh, I gotta apply for this.
Well, I was gonna have one of our senior workers check even the voter, some of the voter registration, to see just, um. If things match up and just, I I'm gonna create a checklist. You know, if things aren't paid, they gotta make sure the taxes are paid, just to, before it's, um, approved. So, so I'm looking into it, so maybe July is a better, you know.
I know, sometimes, uh, it's fun if you go on like MLS or something like that, and you see town of Bellingham and you go on like a. Address and it says, you know, multi-family. That's a multi-family? It's people list them. We would, and that, and they don't even. Yeah, they just, maybe they don't understand, they don't know.
Alright, so I'm, I'll throw most something, except for eighty minutes.
Second.
Your session.
Almost in favor?
Alright. Motion withdrawn.